Forty-one. Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Falkenburg.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. King.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Mrs. Shelby.
Here.
Thank you. We'll go right into item two, two point one, the minutes. The minutes of the regular meeting of March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four will be approved as recorded or corrected. Furthermore, the reading of these minutes will be waived. May we get a motion to approve item two point one?
Shelby?
Second.
Ms. Falkenburg and Mrs. King, any questions or comments? Hearing none. May we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenburg.
Aye.
Mrs. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby.
Aye.
Right into item three, discussion items. Dr. Reed?
Good evening, everybody. We have three discussion items this evening. Our first discussion item will be presented by Assistant Superintendent Melissa Thompson. Before she gets started, I think one of the important things to know is, you know, a lot of times you read or hear in the news or read in the paper that there's certain legislation, House bills and Senate bills that are passed, and then how do school districts address those, that legislation? You know, I have to tell you, it is a daunting task to do that, but I don't think there's anybody better than Ms. Thompson to be able to interpret that, you know, her time in a public school district, but also her time at the Ohio Department of Education, because I don't think a lot of people realize when you, legislation pass, it goes to the Ohio Department of, you know, it's not called the Department, Ohio Department of Education, workforce right now. And then really, sometimes, you know, we're left as school districts to figure out what is the best way to comply with that. And so this evening, we are going to, she's going to share some information on House Bill one twenty-three and Senate Bill two eighty-eight and give an update to the board and hopefully people that are out there listening and how we do our thing here in South Yuga Linnhurst City Schools. So Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, anything else? Thank you, Dr. Reed. Thank you, board, for having the opportunity to share with you what is happening in the state of Ohio and here in our district consistent with legislation. So I'll begin with just the brief overview of both legislative pieces. I'm proud to say, pleased to report, that a lot of this, we've been doing some variation of a lot of legislative requirements for a while. And so, but one of the things that I think I'm most pleased about, thank you, is the provision of the department to have curriculum that is available and makes it, I think, easier to deliver and even share with parents, the actual content and the method of delivery, the information, to make it more manageable. And so with that, I'll start with House Bill one twenty-three. With House Bill one twenty-three, both of the legislative pieces are House Bill one twenty-three and Senate Bill two eighty-eight. And with this, the Senate Bill two eighty-eight, let's start there, because that's where we're starting with Speak Up. So Senate Bill two eighty-eight, also known as Aaron's Law, this is the one that allows for conversation on child abuse prevention, dating violence, sexual abuse prevention. There's a lot of training information and requirements. This stuff is available to you. I can certainly provide to you all of the information, but I did want to share with you the PowerPoint and all the information that we've been sharing with parents. With House Bill one twenty-three, it includes things like the suicide awareness and prevention, violence prevention. And one of the things that we're most familiar with is the reporting, anonymous reporting hotline. And so we've been using that in our district for many years prior to the legislation, very proud of that. That is that Safe Schools Helpline that we're familiar with. It's been posted. Now legislatively, we are required to do it. So that for us was a great thing, because we were doing it anyway. With that also is the threat assessment teams and training. We've had training with C-Stack Model. That is Dr. Dewey Cornell. So that is work that Mr. Capel initiated last school year, so we were already in play with some of that. The other piece with this is the violence prevention pieces. That's connected to, and I'll share with you, Sandy Hook Promise are the curricula that we're using for that, both their Start With Hello program and the See Something, Say Something, their Say Something program. The depression and the suicide prevention, that's Erica's lighthouse. So there are a variety of different curriculum that are available as a result of this. So what did we do last school year? We started with just the review of all of the legislation. Together with Ms. Bastok, we made a legislative chart of all of the curriculum that is required that we've been doing, some, again, some pieces and parts already. This provided the actual evidence-based curriculum that ODE had vetted and approved, so that we could go to their website and look for that. So that's where we started. We went to meetings with the ESC, the meeting with other school districts, trying to learn from one another how we each were going to approach all of this legislation and make sure we got it right. It was very important to us that it wasn't just a checklist that we're just doing it because we're required to do it, but that was also very thoughtfully considered, delivered, and meaningful engagement. When you're talking about heavy topics such as these, you want to make sure that you get it right and that you are honoring the spirit of the legislation, giving parents the opportunity to opt out, but in doing so, making sure that they are aware of the curriculum, of what the requirements are, so that they can make an informed decision when it came to the opportunity to opt out. So I want to share with you first, the... After we went through the, all of the curriculum, our school social workers must give them credit, all of the curriculum that was available to us, we looked at what was at no cost, because we wanted to consider the sustainability. Some of the curriculum that were listed were great curriculum, however, there was a cost associated, and so we wanted to be mindful of that. But even taking the time to go through each, and I have to say, our school social workers read each and every curriculum piece that was available to us to make sure that we were making an informed decision, even in terms of what we were recommending to present. They spoke with, you know, other school districts in like positions to work through, talk about what others are doing. We then met with each of the building student support teams. So in our district, we have our support teams in each building that include our youth development specialists, our student support specialists, the school counselors, the school social workers, just to make sure that when we started this, they were aware and informed, because we recognized that given the legislative requirements, all hands on deck would be necessary. So everyone needed to be trained, have an understanding, but also be able to provide that follow-up, have a balanced approach with a school counselor perhaps, and a youth development specialist, co-presenting their curriculum to support one another, and then also who's going to be available if a student has a question or follow-up concern. So there was a lot of planning that went into that. When we had that meeting, it was a great conversation, because what we were learning was that since we have staff members in, that work here but live in other districts, we were learning some things from them, what was happening in their districts. And I am pleased to say, we are always doing so far. So the time that we have taken to truly plan and prepare and have meaningful engagement and delivery and honor the spirit of the legislation of keeping parents informed has really been great. Some of our staff have indicated that they haven't received anything from their home school districts, so yay for us. And so our parents are receiving a lot of information, not just in Dr. Reed's newsletter that we put out, and we also hosted, and I'm going to share with you, parent meetings, giving them the opportunity to make this decision with us, so that they can see it's not happening to them, but with them on these important topics. So with that...
She'd help us and out?
Yes, I can. I can just take one and pass it around.
Okay, like school?
So when we, in Dr. Reed's messaging, she sent out in her newsletters invitations to families, parents, to come to some, two sessions. One was offered in February, the twenty-eighth of February, the other one on March the sixth. So it is important to note that in planning these meetings, it came as the result of having conversations at CID meetings with the staff that I just mentioned, our school counselors, our school social workers, youth development specialists, student support specialists, our TESL, EL teachers, and I'm going to make a special note about that, as well as our Art Connections teachers. And speaking with Ray, we determined that Art Connections might be a great place, a great opportunity to implement this programming, since for some, they were already addressing some of these things anyway. And so we had at the February morning and March afternoon meetings to really work through and unpack the curriculum, at least starting at this point with Speak Up. And so what you see here is the result of that initial CID, where we determined the best next step was to have this parent meeting, not at all required, again, example. So we went above and beyond to make sure we were informing our parents and our community. So this is the slide presentation that was offered. During that time, we shared with the parents each, just a brief overview of each of the areas that we were going to address, and then gave them some time to have conversation with us, some call-outs. What are some things that you may want to know? What do you need to know? Certainly by law, we have to give you the opportunity to opt out, but what would be helpful for you? One of the best suggestions was with the curriculum that is shared, if we would offer vocabulary to correspond with, so that when the parent is at home and at dinnertime, or whenever, when their young person is coming home, speaking of the things that they talked about in school today, that the parent was armed with the information, so that they could engage in that conversation. Excellent suggestion. Again, not a requirement of the legislation, but... So we wanted to be very responsive to support our parents in having these difficult conversations. And then the other question was, can we provide some resources? When you're talking about child sex abuse, dating violence, like what does the conversation start? Where do I even go with this? How do I, where do I start? And so that information is, and we're putting together not only the vocabulary, but also the list of resources that I'm going to share with you, so that parents have that information available as well. And so one of the pieces that, that I am going to share all these handouts with you, I'm going to explain them very briefly, but I would like to ask Mr. Field to queue up a video, part of the Sandy Hook Promise. Although our implementation of all of this legislation is ongoing and will occur over time, we wanted to start with our Start With Hello with Sandy Hook Promise. That is part of the social inclusion portion of the legislative requirement. And for me, as I've explained to parents, the social inclusion piece is the, I think, the most baseline level of violence prevention and bullying prevention, because it's simply starting with hello. It's hard to be mean to someone, to be a bully to someone, to speak, you know, poorly about someone, or just negative, when you just say hello. It's really, and with a smile. And so the student support teams, and certainly credit to our school social workers and Mr. Field and of course, Ms. Marshall, in putting together this idea, this concept, to start with hello. So during our Spirit Week, this particular video was shared with all of our school buildings. So, Mr. Field?
Hello, South Yuga Linnhurst students and staff. Welcome to Start With Hello Week. Start With Hello Week is a week dedicated to creating new social interactions and increasing kindness among our buildings. We want to reduce social isolation and increase kindness and empathy within our schools. Here at South Yuga Linnhurst, we believe that every day should be a great day, and everyone should have someone to say hello to them. How are you doing? So we are going to start the week by our administrators saying hello to each one of you, and we hope that today, you go and say hello to someone you might not know.
Hello.
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 All right. Hello, I'm Dr. Reed, Superintendent of the South Yuga Linnhurst School District.
Hello, I'm Mr. Capel, one of the Assistant Superintendents. I work over here at the Board of Education Building.
Hello.
I'm Ms. Thompson, Assistant Superintendent, and I work in the central office.
Hello.
I'm Ms. Emmler, Coordinator of Student Services, and I work at the Board of Education of Midway New Building.
Hola.
My name is Robert Johnson, Administrator at Charles at Rush High School.
My name is Mrs. Bussey, and I'm the Director of Student Services. My office is located at the Board of Education.
Hi, I'm Diane Reitman, the Secondary Curriculum Specialist at Rush High School.
Hello, hello, Ms. Reitman, one of the student principals at Memorial Junior High.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Mr. Fuller, and I am the Principal of Roland Elementary School.
I'm Lisa Quick, I'm the fifth grade Assistant Principal at Greenview.
My name is Latrice LaJethro, I am the Assistant Principal at Charles at Rush High School.
My name is Bill Miller, and I am the Director of Human Resources with the South Yuga Linnhurst Schools, and I work here in the Administration Building.
Hello, my name is Mrs. Jenkins, I am the Inter Principal here at Rush High School.
Hello, my name is Mrs. Morris, I am the Coordinator of Exceptional Students, and I work at the Board of Education.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Marshall, Assistant Principal at Roland Elementary School.
I'm Mr. Morton, I work in all the district buildings as the Technology Integration Specialist.
Hello, I'm Matthew Bryan, Principal of Greenview Intermediate School.
Hello, I'm Mr. Capretta, the eighth grade Principal of Memorial Junior High.
Jambo, jambo, me, hello, and swahili.
This is Mr. Lasting, Chief of Staff, Principal of Greenview Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Ms. Byall, I'm responsible for every campus, state reporting, and District Data Department. I work out at the VOD.
I'm Mazzie X, sixth grade Assistant Principal at Greenview Middle School.
I'm Jennifer Moles, I'm the Director of Exceptional Students, and I work at the Board Office.
I am Erica Taylor, Principal of South Yuga Elementary School.
I'm Joe Alzner, I'm the Technology Supervisor.
Oh, there you go.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Young, I am the fifth and sixth grade Building Principal at Greenview Middle School.
I'm Mr. Wiley, I'm the Director of Security for South Yuga Linnhurst School District. I'm responsible for all six buildings, but I'm at Rush High School most.
Hi, my name is Dr. Fuller, I'm the Principal at Memorial Junior High School.
I'm glad you're here. Have a great day.
And let everybody say hello. I can do that.
See one tape, Ryan. Do this again in three, two...
So you see, Mr. Phil had a fun time with that, too. Would you, would you like to say anything about that, Mr. Phil, because he really had fun?
I don't know why this computer will not play the audio individually.
We don't play you, Mr. Phil, we're good.
Other than that, I don't know. It was, it was really fun. It was fun to tape, and so he was set up at the Board Office and was catching everyone coming through, and so, but, but that was shared at all of our school buildings, just to kick off that Spirit Week, and you're going to continue to see more of that. And again, as the school year, next school year progresses, you'll see the implementation of all the programming. It was a lot. It has been a lot. Again, wanted to share with you, these were the frequently asked questions that we provided that came as a result of all of our teams coming together on those CID's to work through, what are the things that we know our parents are going to need, that our fellow staff members are going to need, because we have the benefit of being steeped in this legislation, in the curriculum, reviewing everything. But we wanted to make sure that at those parent meetings, our families, our parents left with a handout that was also available to them. The next piece is with the opt-out, the opt-out is required, and one of the benefits of having the, the support of our TESL, our EL teachers, they gave a perspective in that planning time in that planning meeting, to make sure that this information is so incredibly important, that we spent the effort to make sure that the languages that are spoken, there are ten in our districts, that every letter was translated as needed. So if you look through, you'll see a couple of translations. Our most frequent are Spanish and Nepali, so you'll see those, but we have them in all of our ten languages, so that with the building principals and our EL teachers, that they identified that family needed that information and was available to them. And then the vocabulary list, you can take one of these and pass it around as well. And again, the vocabulary for Speak Up is what I'm sharing with you. This is delivered by Green Band, so the key vocabulary words from each of the curriculum that's being implemented is provided, so that parents have that again, as those talking points of knowing if your student comes home and says something, that they feel connected to what's happening at school. And again, those were translated as well, and on the backside, the resources. This information is being shared as the curriculum is being implemented, our school counselors and the support team at the respective school is sharing this information electronically, so that the hyperlinks are working that way, so we're also going to create a page, so that it is available as a resource to our parents and our families. One final piece that I want to share with you, connected to our work last week, on the one side, we were at this, we had a presentation, ending the silence, but Nami was invited to come and do a presentation, and so, if you want to pass that around. And then on the flip side, we have on maybe sixth, the Do It For James Foundation. It's about sex extortion and the story, personal story of Mr. and Mrs. Woods, who had a significant loss in their family, their son took his life. And so they have agreed to come and participate in this meeting with us, deliver this important message and information. It has been shared, again, in Dr. Reed's monthly newsletter, we're sharing it here at Rush, we're asking students to come with their parents. These are important conversations. In each of the sessions that we've had, both Nami and with Mr. and Mrs. Woods for Do It For James, our clinical providers are on site, so that in the event, something is triggering for a family, or if they have follow-up questions, we just wanted to speak with someone in real time, that is a clinician, a licensed therapist, that is available to them. So a lot of things were happening with House Bill one twenty-three, Senate Bill two eighty-eight. That was a very brief overview, I didn't feel very much, but it really happened. So hopefully, though, it is helpful for you and to give you a little bit of information on what's happening, what's trending now for us here in the district. Do you have any questions? That was a lot, sorry, but I wanted to keep you up to date.
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Ms. Thompson, for that. Appreciate it. I, I think, as we said, you know, there's, that's just a very quick snapshot, an illustration of taking, you know, a House Bill or a Senate Bill, and not just complying with the law, but being able to do what's right for our students. And in many cases, I'm with you, I mean, we're, we're ahead of the curve, but at the, you know, at the same time as, you know, Ms. Thompson, you heard her say, there's some school districts, parents are saying that they didn't get any information, but I, I need to, again, commend Ms. Thompson, because she really knows how to dig down deep and be ahead of the curve, and I think our families and our students are benefiting from that as well, so I just wanted to acknowledge all that hard work, and it is, takes a lot of detail work, so thank you, Ms. Thompson, on that. Before we get to the next title, I mean, the next family engagement, Mrs. Bussey, I do also want to tee this up a little bit. Mrs. Bussey has been in our district for decades, is that correct, Mrs. Bussey?
Oh, yeah, I've been here for a little while.
And, you know, for years, she had been a building principal at, at Roland, and she's been Assistant Principal, and when she came into the central office, we had a role of, of family engagement. But I have to tell you what, this past year, you know, we have expanded her role into the Director of Student Services, and for anybody that's a baseball player, I'm going to use the term utility player, because really, we talk about Director of Student Services, it's really all encompassing. It could be one minute, you're, you're, you know, talking about registration, and the next minute, you're talking, you know, about health, health services, the next minute, we're looking at student disciplines and handbooks, and, and then always putting to the forefront why we do this job as our students, and that's one thing about Mrs. Bussey, her passion, and so, you know, really, tonight, she's going to talk about some family engagement, but it's really a role of a, of a utility player. I mean, what I mean is just really stepping up in so many different areas and, and being good at, and I do think her years of experience as a building principal, but also her role as a, as a mother, also really helps us to enhance what she's been doing here in SEL, so I thought it was important to also highlight the work of some of our central office folks in tonight. Mrs. Bussey, you're up.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Don't forget your mic.
Oh. Yeah, only because at home, they can't hear you on the U2.
She looks like she's about to go off. Y'all know what happens when I get a mic.
I know. You do, you do pretty well with the mic.
Is it on? Is it on, Mr. Phil?
Wait, you got help coming.
Certified, please. Is that good, or do I need to hold it? I don't know.
Ask, well, let's ask our help over there. Can they hear?
Yeah, definitely. That will be fine if I project that way. All right, well, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Reed, for that wonderful introduction. I truly have enjoyed all of my, I think this is year twenty-three, in South Yuga Linnhurst and School District in multiple capacities, but I think I've found a niche, and I am enjoying my time in student services. And so I'm going to be really brief. I promise I'm...
Yeah, well, we know, we kind of all know what that means. There's a brief with an asterisk.
I am going to be brief, and I just kind of want to just highlight just a couple of things to share with the, the board and those that are watching. One of our, highlight one of our partners, but before I do that, I just kind of want to speak to family and community engagement. And so often, when we think about family and community engagement, we sometimes just think about all of the PTA activities, and family and community engagement is so much more than that. They talk about beyond the bake sale. And that's some of the stuff that Ms. Richardson, who is our PTA president, also speaks to and is really pushing for more engagement type activities, where families come together and really are engaged with one another, engaged with our staff, engaged with our administrators. And so the first handout that you have is from Dr. Joyce Epstein, and it speaks to the six types of parental involvement. And Dr. Reed did share this early on with our PTA at, at one of the PTA council meetings, where it talks about parenting, it talks about communicating, volunteering, learning at home, decision-making, and collaborating. This is all tied to our Board Policy twenty-one eleven, Parent and Family Engagement. So it aligns to what you all have said we should be doing, okay? So again, that's Policy twenty-one eleven. The next thing I want to share with you comes from the Ohio State University. That's a plug, Naya, if you're watching. Comes from the Family, Ohio Family Engagement Center at the Ohio State University. And Dr. Boom and Dr. Haley speaks to a multi-tiered approach to family engagement. And so our building principals were exposed to this thought, this concept, this framework, as we talk about a multi-tiered approach for family engagement. So I just kind of want to do a call, a couple of call-outs when we talk about that tiered approach. Everyone's used to the triangle, right? And so within that triangle... triangle, you have your tier one, which is your universal for all. Then you have your tier two, which is for specific groups. And then your tier three might be individualized. But I do want to caution us as we think about family engagement, uh, and we think about the multi-tiered approach, we are not putting families in tiers. So it's not like Bussie is in tier one, Caples in tier two, Thompson's in tier three. That's not what we're talking about when we're talking about the specific tiers to an MTSS program and family engagement. Really, it's a model that categorizes our practices. And so depending on what the need is, that's where you go. So you can go within different tiers depending on what the need is for that particular engagement. So I just want to do a call out to that. The next thing that you have complements that particular article, and that is the triangle. And the triangle speaks to the universal for all families, tier two tailored for groups of families, and tier three for intensive, uh, or for individual families. And so we had an opportunity, um, with our building principals and them using this when we were doing some stuff with transitioning to the next building. And so they worked through this as they transition. So what are some things that all families need? What are some things that maybe groups of families need? And then what is something for individualized, right? And so we spent time working through that and me sharing this particular framework. On the backside, it speaks to the roles of the families as initiators, co-designers, receivers, providers, and evaluators. And so again, there's different roles that family play in, in this part, particular process. It kind of goes back to the Epstein piece in decision-making, involving our families in the things that we are doing. So again, you can read on your own. But again, this is a framework that we are hoping to continue and really dive a little deeper into, um, using this. Because I do think that it helps us to ensure equality and equity for all. Uh, we have a variety of different types of families within our district that have different types of, of needs. Uh, and so even when you're doing programming and we're collaborating with Ray's office, right? What does that look like? This is what's happening. How are we then ensuring that we're connecting the dots for every single family? Each family, not some families, but all families. So that's that. The last thing I'm going to share with you, I told you I was going to be brief, um, is just highlight one of our partners, Hands, Hands On Health. And so, uh, this particular partnership with Hands On Health, Melissa, Ms. Thompson brought to us, we did some vetting, uh, and was like, wow, this is a great family engagement opportunity, an opportunity, uh, for us to engage with our families through an academics lens, but also an, an opportunity for families to just engage with one another as a family. Uh, and still be able to walk and take something away, thinking about mental health, thinking about physical health, and that whole child. And so again, this, to me, is more around the whole child framework when we think about, um, our children and our families. So Hands On Health, their mission is to encourage and strengthen under-resourced communities to live their highest potential through Hands On Heart Health Education. Their goal is to strengthen communities of Cleveland as a whole by providing tools that build knowledge and healthier lifestyles to help reduce the risk of generational health disparities that lead to heart disease, which is the leading cause of deaths in the US. They take an extra step with the younger generation to address equality and equity gap in careers in healthcare by providing students with hands-on experiences that encourage the attainment of higher education with an emphasis on STEM healthcare. And so we partner with them and we've had three events so far in Arcade Three buildings. Uh, so all of our elementary buildings had their individual event. And then we're having a fourth through eighth grade event next week, um, with Greenview and Memorial where our families will have the opportunity to come out, uh, and engage in some, uh, activities. Our building principals, uh, Dr. Fuller, Mrs. Young, and Mr. Bryan are going to provide an educational portion at the very beginning to connect again, making that connection, going back to the Epstein framework, all of that making sense. And then there'll be the opportunity for families to engage with one another in a fun way and making a healthy meal. And so what we are going to be doing, as it speaks to at the, the bottom of that page, is what is called a Family Date Day. And it brings their two programs together. Their Wealthy Heart Program, which is for adults, was the screening and things like that, um, with their science lab STEM program, which is more for their youth. So without further ado, Mr. Doug, this is what the, uh, Family Date Day looks like. And this was at Arcade Three Experience. So, um, it was a wonderful event at all K three of our buildings. So what you saw was actually, um, when the families come in, they're greeted, uh, and then, like I said, the building principals will do an educational component, uh, to it. And that was kind of add on that, we added our own little twist as they prep. And then they do a spill about healthy living and so forth with our families. And then our kids and their families go grocery shopping. So you saw the fresh, um, produce that was out there. They go grocery shopping. They have a menu. We made tacos and they were good because it was all fresh stuff. Like, it was really good. Uh, and so they go and then they, they cook and build that meal together as a family. Uh, and so the smiles told it all. Uh, it was a wonderful event. It was educational and they learned about eating healthy, uh, and taking care of one's body. And so, uh, that's all I have for this evening, uh, in regards to this particular family engagement opportunity.
Quick question. Um, there's, so there's one next week. Is it next Thursday?
It is next Thursday.
Okay. And it's at Greenview?
It is at Greenview. Yes.
I can't make it, but I just wanted to do the shout out.
When is it?
It is next.
Next Thursday.
Trying to crash. Next Thursday.
What time do you, is it at nine?
So it is six o'clock. And so the educational program is six to six thirty. And then the engagement with the twins, they're twin pharmacists, um, will start at six thirty. So if you want to stop by, we have space for you. Feel free. And then to top it all off, um, through the Office of Student Services, uh, we then also provide each family with a gift card, um, so that they can recreate that meal at home at a later time. So that's their kind of takeaway and their appreciation for coming, uh, and joining, uh, us for this family engagement event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bussie.
So you know, this theme tonight, it's, it's highlighting some of the district initiatives from some of the district offices. And next up, um, Mr. Capel, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Capel is going to, to, uh, talk about the Evolve. This will not be the first or the last time that you hear about it. I know we are, um, presented at the PTA meeting last week. Uh, we're, we're, I would say we're learning more. We're getting more information as we go. Obviously, the rollout is for next year. But, um, this is a perfect opportunity to, um, hear about it. And I think it's going to be, like I said, not the first time, not the last time, because it is something that's going to be a part of, of schools and school districts, um, moving forward. So, Mr. Capel, um, yeah, this is not a long presentation because we'll be circling back around probably next month. But I wanted you to get a little bit of a snapshot of, of what it is.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Reed, Board of Education. So, um, only on one slide here. So I presented at the PTA meeting, uh, council meeting the other day. Talked to Ms. Jones before, gave my heads up. Uh, this is something we've been working on since probably October, November, uh, looking at different enhancements. Uh, mine's not as fun as what you, what you just witnessed there. Uh, what these are, um, these are AI metal detectors. Uh, we are looking to put them, install them into Greenview, Memorial, and Brush High School. Um, there would be two systems at each building. Uh, right now, when you enter Brush High School, for example, you enter either in the main entrance or in the cafeteria. Um, that would not change, okay? Students would come in. These are not your old, old school metal detectors. These are AI metal detectors. Uh, so it allows you to go through. You can have your backpack, you can have your keys, you can have your cell phones. Uh, there's two school districts that we visited. Uh, shout out to Groveport Madison and Columbus. Um, house does very well. And Euclid City Schools is where we went. Um, I actually walked in the building with the kids over at Euclid, um, just to see it in action, to see how it, uh, see how it operates. Uh, this is something that is not easy, to be honest with you. Um, this is something that we have to continue to do to enhance to make sure everybody's safe. Um, as I told the PTA, it's something different than going to Target. It was different than going to the movie theater right now. You know what I mean? It's, it's just the reality of the situation. So what we're trying to do is always enhance, trying to make our kids as safe as possible. And what these do compared to the old school metal detectors, what these do is, um, Doug, if you can click on the website link right there. Um, this is, go back for me one more time, Doug, to the presentation. And click on the evolve up top. That was my fault. Yeah, thanks, sir. So, um, you can Google it. Um, this is what it is. Um, you're going to see NFL, NBA, MLB. Uh, this is where Tyler, who used to work security for the NBA, got the idea from. And then we started to see schools using it because it doesn't back you up. So you don't have to get your keys. You don't have to get all your stuff out, right? Because as administrator, principal, that's where my head went first of how are we going to get all these kids through at once, right? So there'll be a two-tiered system. They'll come through. Um, and I'll, I'll have a lot more. I'll be able to show you this, but just give you a brief example. If I'm walking through the building, there'll be a security guard standing there, look like an iPad. If any, nine times out of ten, it's green, you just keep moving. Um, if anything red comes up, it's, puts a square around what it sees. So it'll put it around the backpack. It'll put it around here. Security guard points over. Then there's a secondary spot where your bag might get checked, or you might get rewandered, or whatever that might be. Uh, the plan for communication of all this, Doug, if you, Mr. Phil, if you can go back to presentation. Uh, we have, we started a Q and A down here. Um, it's already branded. It's ready to go. Um, just specific things. Again, shout out to Groveport Madison. If you click on that one for me. Um, our website right now is under construction. Um, it's going to look very similar to this, to what they have. So if you scroll over here, just go up a little bit. Thank you. So you got information for parents, you got information for students, help guide, website, search to use your policy. So everything's there. There's no games, no tricks. Everything's on there. So I asked our marketing team of Jim and Gabe to mimic this for now, get me started on it, and then we'll come through and we'll, we'll put it, our twist on things. Uh, but I wasn't going to change it because I like it, to be honest with you. Uh, and this is their big selling point, right? You see kids walking through with their cell phone. You see a young lady walking through with her purse. You can do all those things.
Can you talk to them about the Chromebook?
Yeah, so, so there was, it does detect Chromebooks. Um, that's the one, one piece of this thing. So I was like, oh, here we go. Right? So Grove, the two buildings I've visited, Groveport Madison, what they do is they actually have a help video that shows them. They actually hand it off to somebody. They walk through and then they get handed again. My, my head went to, man, that's more manpower. That's more people we need. I went to Euclid. I'm literally walking in with kids. I have videos. And I'm watching these kids. I'm like, yo, that's what we're doing. I love this. So I'm walking and they just hold their Chromebook in the air. And then they just walk through.
Because it would detect the Chromebook, but if they have something else, they'll have two red spots.
You got it. Yep. It'll detect. You know, it's going to put a square out. Now supposedly, I hope they're listening. Uh, Evolve is having an upgrade coming where it starts to learn, right? So that's what we're hoping it gets to. And also, he's not here. Uh, Morton Ryan was telling me that there's different weights, different metal on the newer Chromebooks that we're getting. So he's interested to see if it even triggers. Not saying they're not going to, just saying that that might be an option. And then, uh, these are, these are draft. I'm going to collect these. You get to read quick. Uh, but these are hot off the presses here. These would be another example of, um, let's give it to the board here, of the, of the communication that would go home, uh, to parents. So what you'll see in there is a little message, little mess, yes. Would be another message, uh, for me, just stating off what it is, a little bit of overview and benefits. Um, how the screening process will work for students and frequently ask questions. So again, this is just another start. Um, I was talking with Dr. Reed today. The goal is to start marketing, start communicating in May, hit it again in June, hit it again in July. And then when we start in August, whether it's open house, freshman orientation, those type of things, I'd love to have these set up and ready just so the kids just start getting used to them. And then they start following the process through and through. So that's, that's the Evolve. Uh, the other, the other caveat to this, uh, these are mobile devices. So what that means is, uh, we will be using these for varsity games as well. Okay? So for football and basketball especially, uh, when those crowds are coming through. So we will be able to move them. And I also told the PTA, the other caveat is when you add something, something else has got to give. So just use Memorial for an example. Right now, when you go to the front of Memorial, you get buzzed right in. Okay? Well, now with the Evolve system, if I'm a parent and I show up at nine fifteen to get my student, I'm going to ring the doorbell. You're going to have to wait because a security guard is going to have to be radioed down to the main office. They're going to have to walk through the Evolve. I can't ask secretary or an assistant to do that. So just being honest, open front with everybody, that's going to be the one, one caveat because what we'll do is at Memorial, there's the entrance by professor, then the back entrance at the drop off. Once first period starts, both those devices will be deactivated. One will be wheeled up front to the front office, plugged in, charged, ready to go. Then when people start coming through that main entrance, somebody arrives, I have to get the security guard down there. So again, we're looking at Greenview, Memorial, and Brush. Uh, thank you to that guy right back there in the yellow, okay, behind the scenes. Uh, this is being paid for, um, through grant dollars, okay, for year one. Okay? Uh, Josh and I are working on year two, year three, because there are recurring fees that come with it. It's not cheap. It's good. Uh, but we are payable to, thanks to the help of Dante and Josh's office, that we are able to get this paid for. Year one, the, the big, the big meet, um, out of grants.
So what do you do with a student that comes in, notices, and circumvents?
So that's something else we're working through. Um, you'll see it in here. I don't know if it's in this one or maybe it's in one of those. Um, Euclid and Groveport, if you try to go around or you try to avoid or another student lets somebody in another door, that's where my head went, what my junior high kids do, right? Not even saying they have a weapon, right? There's some rules, so they're trying to get around. That's what they do. So they're trying to come around it. There's got to be some type of consequence. There's got to be some type of parent, parent communication. There's got to be some type of something. That's what we're working through right now. That'd be a part of the board policy and some other things.
Do you, um, this is probably a bad choice of words, but do you chase down a kid that turns away when they are coming up to like, oh, man, I didn't realize I have this gun on me, so to speak? And they leave?
No, that's happened. I asked, uh, I won't say which school. Um, they've had that. Um, they've seen people leave. Uh, do they send people after them right away? No. Uh, the reason is, um, one, they have camera systems similar to ours. So they're able to spot that kid right away. So we can always loop back to them, um, if needed. Now, if we saw a kid that turned Now, if we saw a kid that turned around and then stayed around, the building, that's, that's a different example, okay? But most of the time, your security lens, where they do, they're, they're not sticking around. They're, they're getting out of here.
So one of the things, if I could comment on that piece, a great, great point is, you know, even when folks put in metal, metal detectors and then talk to those superintendents, and obviously this is the, the new, the new line, that will actually trigger some other kids to want to circumvent it. And it, and it will, because now they know that you can't, and so Brush High School is a challenge. It's a lot, because there's how many doors, Catherine, I'm Mrs. Falkenberg. So I think that's the piece where the team will work with the, you know, with the administration. I, I think you almost have to immediately address it, because there's kind of, it's really the people part. You could have all the great, uh, facilities and the metal, but it's also the training of the staff. And more importantly, the students listening out there is the training of the students not to let somebody in too. So I think that was one of the things that, Mr. Cabello's absolutely right. When you put this in here, but when they know it, they're gonna try to circumvent. And then what is going to be the consequence of this, you know, circumventing? And I'm sure somewhere in either Board Policy or our handbook will have to be communicated, because it will be tried.
I have a question. Um, so when you have groups of students that leave in the middle of the day, like for field trips, will they come back through metal detectors when they come back in the building?
Yep.
Okay. 'Cause I know like the marching band goes out, so, okay.
Well, mine's more of a comment. Um, I saw in the video, and then it jogged my memory. I've used these, 'cause I've been to the Georgia Aquarium. Fantastic. And so I'm an early person. I will go right when they open, 'cause I don't wanna deal with the crowds. But like, imagine, like, it's the middle of Atlanta, all the kids coming in, all their parents, and it just, they keep it moving. Keep it moving. So like, this is very exciting.
Awesome. Thank you. That's good to hear. I appreciate it. And then our, our, our last steps, if you go back to the presentation room with Mr. Phil. So this, this is where we're at. So we, we hit the tours. Um, we had the front solidified. Um, BOE approval, you'll see this on next two weeks' agenda. Uh, currently working with Eric Johnson's team, uh, from Howard, or not Howard.
Western Hurd.
From Western Hurd on Board Policy. Uh, polled, uh, I shouldn't say I, Amber and Lisa polled Board Policies from six different districts. They use them. So we've been comparing and contrasting what we like, what we don't like. Uh, websites being built, uh, communication, that was one example for you. Uh, Mr. Phil and Mr. Wiley, um, are gonna work on doing some type of videos, some things like Groveport Madison has. We're actually gonna use student groups, student leader groups. They'll help us do this. One of them's gonna be the Greenview, uh, Student Council. So I'm gonna talk to them. I mentioned these, and they're all for them, so they're gonna help me make videos. Big, and then these last two, one, make them the new norm. It's gonna take us some time. Telling everybody in April, be patient with this first couple of weeks of school, as we crank this out. And then varsity games will, will also be another avenue for them, so.
Do you envision, and I know this is a big envision, but at some point, do you envision the possibility to get them all doors eventually, or is the cost just too enormous?
Yeah, the cost would be outrageous. And honestly, it goes, it goes against what we're trying to do on the security lens, where there's only X amount of entrance points, right? And then we can filter everything through there, so then other security guards will be at other entrances. And that, that's what we're trying to get to. Uh, Groveport has four entrances, so they have four. And then I watched, I watched theirs, but the weather camp is set up. It makes sense how their flow is. But then I watched three that just sit there, and they're not activated all day long.
That's smart, 'cause you waste money sitting there.
After first period rings, there's only one way in, one way out of every building. And you get charged per unit for the software and all that stuff. Any other questions? I'll have a lot more on this as we, as it unfolds, but just wanted to be transparent, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cabello.
Thank you.
Well, I have to tell you what, you know, I get excited about crazy things, but that was really good information, I hope. Uh, it really highlights the work of a lot of the different offices in the central office. And, uh, um, stay tuned, uh, with more information on Evolve. That, uh, is all for the discussion items, uh, this evening.
One, one key piece, too. I know he mentioned that's grad-funded. The gift cards that are be given, that are gonna be given away were donated. They weren't purchased with school funds.
The gift cards for the Hands on Health?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
The gift cards that our families are gonna be receiving and donating.
Yes, from the Hands on Health.
Oh, yeah, all donation.
Just like a little treasure. That is clarified here.
All right. We do not have a need for executive session. I think I sent that message out to you all. With that being said, it is now six thirty-five. May I re-gain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for joining us.